I assume you want me to join you appear at this table.
Yeah, I think Bill.
Is over that way.
Bill's right here.
Okay.
I just wanted to be close to the computer.
Yeah.
Just in case anything is needed.
So this is Bill here or here?
That's Bill, right there.
All right, I'll sit here.
All right, Jim, we can see you and hear you, so that's good.
All right, good morning. How are you this morning?
Good, thanks.
You get confused when you see me because you see me in so many places?
I could ask you the same thing. That's why I said to remind ourselves, where are we today?
Oh, sorry.
It's okay. You don't have coffee, you have water.
Yeah, I already had my two cups of coffee, that's all I got.
My second one.
Anymore and I'd be a little too jittery.
I have to control my blood pressure. Who is it for me because of that?
So I'm going to join just in case we need anything to share. If you think we do, just let me know.
Okay.
I think.
See if people understand or they're concerned or confused.
Right. I mean, all it is, is just pictures of some of the. Damage of that, so. That the repairs that have been done.
Have you been following this on Facebook at all?
A little bit.
Yeah, Kathy tells me, I don't, I don't have a Facebook.
It's quieted down.
Has it?
It has.
Good.
Because a couple of people responded with, you know, five million minutes.
Pretty reasonable.
Well, it's not a new school.
Yeah. A new school is fifty to sixty million.
Yeah, Wellington right now is going for sixty.
I think they're looking at sixty.
Sixty, and then Mansfield's new school was fifty.
And when we did our high school ten years ago. Maybe fifteen years ago, it was fifty-six.
Right.
In Bolton.
We'd also get a smaller school.
We get a smaller school.
A much smaller.
Yeah.
Building than what we have.
Right, based, based on the population on the street would be small.
You do these all the time, right?
Yeah. And we, all of our meetings in Bolton are now hybrid. Up until recently, our planning as only commission was still meanwhile. Remotely, but they just, they just went, they just went.
Am I in the town meeting? Yep. Yep. The current reimbursement rate for us is on sixty-three to sixty-five.
I thought it was sixty-three, it was last night.
Yep.
But it's gonna change a little bit year to year, but yeah. That's working. It is.
It is, yep.
John said he could see me and hear me. Very good.
That here early, about thirty or forty cars in the parking.
You were getting excited, huh?
It's a good turnout.
It's a basketball game.
It turns out it's a basketball tournament.
That's funny.
Reporting in progress.
Good morning. Well, thank you. Yeah, she's, she's born. It's Saturday morning.
Yeah.
My coffee cup's almost empty, you know.
So what I'm gonna do. Call a special selectment meeting, just because that was an advice. Yes, all that to order. Yeah, but you can, I, I got a couple of problems. I'll introduce the main tables here. And then I'm going to formally open up the public hearing. And I'm gonna turn it to you. To store back.
Yep.
And start taking questions. I'm gonna ask anybody that says questions who wants to make elements. People go up to the mic. Identify themselves. We'll wing it from there.
Sounds good.
Are you gonna be all right there?
Yeah, no, it's fine. I just lean over this way a little bit. When I was leaning over talking to Bill, I got me right.
They had me say, well, I was a chair there yesterday when we were gonna test it, this isn't gonna work.
We're starting to fill the place up.
So this is everything on the table up here.
Oh, no.
I mean, we've seen all of it, but you just.
I would like to. Okay, my end up saying. One of the things we find. Was find out about this. And the other thing is to replace this panel by ourselves. And. You cannot hear in the rain spelling. You can't hear the library. So these are all. And this is no. I'm good, how are you? You holding up okay? Yep.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you? Very well. Thanks for coming.
Good participation.
Yeah.
For years.
Yeah.
Talked about this at least ten plus years ago.
Been working on this a long time.
Long time, yeah, it's great.
We're, we're doing. Thanks for coming.
So this is hot.
Yes.
Yes.
They, they can hear us from retard.
That I don't know.
No, remember they couldn't.
So I think that's just for reporting.
That's just for the.
So you just have.
We were using the big speakers, which is.
They couldn't set, they couldn't.
Yeah, it's just, it's just for recording, okay. We're filling up the room, that makes me happy. Okay, folks, we're gonna call a meeting to order in a couple of minutes. If everybody could be seated, appreciate it. I'm not gonna comment.
I try. Well, yeah. Not, you're not supposed to always agree.
We actually had a really good group when I was there.
Yes. Yep.
Okay, I'm gonna call a meeting to order. Just to let you know the format that we'll be following here. Because the meeting itself is being run by the Board of Selectmen. This is also a special selectments meeting. Which will convene at ten oh two. President or Catherine Silversmith, myself. Roger Phillips has been excused. He's unable to make it. And what we'd be doing next is going into the public hearing section of it. Doing some introductions. Once that's done. We will then taking probably a five-minute break. And then going into the actual town meeting. Well, we'll be asking for consideration of the. Agenda Biden for approval of the bond issue regarding the roof. Again, my name is Bill Falletti for Selectmen, Catherine Silversmith to my right, Selectman Jim Rupert. Longtime Chairman of the Board of Ed and, and member of the Board of Ed, of course, and also Chairman of the Building Commitment Committee. Next is Cindy Ford, our Superintendent. And about to be seated is Sherry Much, our Town Clerk. And again, what I'd like to do is thank you all for coming. The rationale for the Board of Selectmen to call this meeting in, in this facility. In this venue was we had a better opportunity to. Address a larger number of people. And give you an opportunity to. To have your say or answer any questions you may have. I'd like to thank the Board of Education. And Cindy for hosting this venue. It's, we, we very much appreciate their efforts. So. Former Chair of the Board of Ed. Yeah. Jim's the former Chair of the Board of Ed, I didn't say that. Jane Urban, I don't know, are you here, Jane?
Yes, she is.
Jane's, she's our Chairman. Of the Board of Ed. Having said that, what I'd like to do is I will call the public hearing section of the. Meeting in session. And I'm going to turn it over to Jim Rupert to give you some background and history on how we got here. And then he will be probably taking the brunt of the questions. But we'll be taking comments and questions from you folks. If you're going to be speaking, what we'd ask you to do is come up to the podium. Introduce yourself, we don't need a street number, but just indicate the street you live on. And your name, and. We'd like to keep the comments to a maximum of three minutes if possible. If we get to everybody, we like to have further comments, we'll certainly extend that. Any questions? Hearing none, I will turn it over to the Chairman of the Building Committee. That'll have to publicly, I beg your pardon. We, we don't, we don't have speakers, but I'll speak as loud as I can. Can you hear me okay back there now? Okay, and, and we do have some seats up here in the front, if that'd be better for you. Yeah, if, if there's anybody on Zoom, if you'd please mute yourselves. We're experiencing some, some feedback. Appreciate it.
And we'll all try to speak as loudly as we can.
John, are, are you hosting this or Mike?
I'm here right now. What do you need?
Could, if you could mute everybody at this point.
Everybody's, everybody's muted.
Thank you. Are you still getting feedback? No, good. Thank you. Mr. Rupert.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you so much for coming. This is a very important issue that we have before us. What we're here to talk about today is replacement of the roof on this school building. Most areas of the roof are in excess of thirty years old. Which is about ten years past its normal lifespan. We've gotten this far with a robust program. Of maintenance, the school has been. Paying somebody to come in a couple of times a year. To, to do a complete survey of all roughly eighty thousand square feet of the roof. And making repairs as necessary. Our staff here who work at the school. Take interim steps in between those inspections and repairs. And that's how we've gotten so far down the road. We're at a point where continuing to do that. Is really untenable. And there's some real benefits to putting a roof on at this point in time. Many of you have either been in this room or the, or the library during a heavy rain event. There's no insulation on this roof whatsoever. When you're in a room like this during one of those events. You can't hear yourself think. One of the, one of the advantages of putting a school roof on. Is we're going to save energy because the roof will be insulated. That brings up. Some other difficulties, which are, are the parapet walls around the exterior edge of the school. Won't be quite tall enough to accommodate that insulation. But they're also in a place where they need repair, there's voids in them. There's leaks that are coming through those. There's active leaks in the school that we can't even fix anymore because. We just can't figure out where they're coming from. And so the time has come to really consider doing this. This has been planned for some time and it's been planned in conjunction. With a solar project, we have a solar consultant who's been working with us for. I, I want to say nearly two years at this point. And that would be a lease purchase program. A power purchase program, so the solar itself would come at no cost to us as the taxpayers. Unfortunately, the roof is not a free project. The roof is about a five million dollar ask. That's the entire cost of the roof. We do have a reimbursement rate today of about sixty-three percent. So if you do the math, you know, that, that takes the project down to less than two and a half million dollars for us as taxpayers. I, I think if you've looked at the paperwork that's been provided today. You, you've got an idea of what that would. You know, be out of pocket for each of us as taxpayers. But at the end of the day, you know, this is an environment where our children, our grandchildren. Nieces and nephews, this is where they come to become educated. This is where our teachers work. And this is where we have recreation going on for our town. We don't have a rec center, this is it. As we sit here today, there's a basketball game going on next door, which is extraordinary. So those are the reasons thi- this, this building is. The single most valuable investment that the town has as far as real estate is concerned. We need to take care of it. And without a good foundation and a good roof. The fluff in the middle doesn't matter a lot. The School Building Committee has plans to work with the Board of Education. For additional planning for improvements to the school building down the road, but this really is the first step. So that, that's my introduction, if there's questions, we'll certainly try to answer any questions that, that folks have.
If I could just add one thing to Jim's comments, this has also. Been declared as a town-wide emergency shelter. God forbid, but if we had a, a, a major catastrophe throughout town. You know, a tornado or a major issue up on eighty-four, whatever. This has been designated for all residents of town as an emergency shelter. So it's just one more of the multi-uses. That this entire facility. Is, is utilized for. Anything else, Jim?
That's all I have for the moment. Catherine, did you have any comment?
I'd say look up, look up. That was okay many years ago. There's not really insulation in there. And that's part of the reason that it's so noisy. And when my grandson went to school here a number of years ago. That was the first thing I saw when I walked into this room and I thought. Where's the rest of it? So it has come time. And I totally agree with Jim. He's done a great job with that committee.
Cindy, any comments or thoughts?
No, it, you know, it is definitely a, a needed thing and it's the first step before we can go forward with anything else. Before you can do solar, before you can do windows, before you can do. You know, any improvements that we want to do to the building, we have to have. A solid roof.
The only thing I might mention out on the, the front table. We have made available to the public documentation that's pertinent to this issue. For instance, a copy of the, the bond resolution. A copy of our financial consultants report. On impact, Jim alluded to it earlier. Regarding potential long-term impact. Best case scenario, right now, we're looking if, if everything falls in line, the way that we're hoping it does. Is probably starting this project the summer of twenty-four. So it will not have any impact directly on your. Tax base, at least for a couple of years. So the costs that are projected right now will be following that, they're also based on today's market. Okay, I saw a couple of hands again, if you could. Come up to the podium and name yourself. Appreciate it and we'll take your questions.
Question I have, as you mentioned about the unseen damages, the leaking, you don't know the source of. Is there anything in this appropriation? To anticipate you had to prepare since you buy that to make when you uncover. Whatever it is, it's.
So the, the, the Board of, the, the Board of Selectmen. Did allow us to hire a consultant. And that consultant is Mike Serrano from Fire Associates. He is a Connecticut licensed architect. And he has looked at this with us on multiple occasions. And we feel that the number we have is going to address. All of the issues that we, we can anticipate, and even some that we don't anticipate.
Can someone turn that mic up or?
It, it's up at full throttle, the only thing we'll ask is that you kind of lean into that mic, I think we'll pick you up better.
Jamie Walter, Zancheck Road. Very quick question, you mentioned there was a discount. You said sixty-two percent, but are we paying sixty-two percent of the five million or are we? Got a sixty-three percent reduction?
So, so the way that that program works is, is we have to, we, we have to borrow the entire amount. And then, once the project is completed. The State Board of Education does an audit of our paperwork. And may actually send an inspector out to look at the roof. And then we will get reimbursed. And then the, that's when the Board of Selectmen work with our Bond Council. And our Financial Advisor. To kind of make that discount, there's, there's a few things that happen in that process. But we have to start by borrowing the entire amount.
That's actually not the question, the question is. When you say sixty-three percent, or is that? The amount that we pay out of the five million at the end of the day? Or is that the amount of reduction?
That's the amount of reduction.
Okay, so, so when you brag about it, you can say less than two billion. Because the actual number.
There's a little more money in there, the, the state will reimburse us sixty-three percent. Exclusive of soft costs, so. That's where a little of the difference is, if you look at the Munistat. Breakdown, there's a little more money added in for that.
And I believe the soft costs are what, about eighty-five thousand?
Eighty-five is estimated right now.
I should assure you that. That doesn't affect my vote, I'm a, I want somebody to be able to pay my social security.
Understood.
The, the next question has to do with. With the solar roof. There are tax benefits under the Inflation Reduction Plan. For going solar. Does this plan take advantage of those reimbursements?
Be- because it's a power purchase agreement. We don't get those tax benefits, the person who actually owns the solar panels gets those tax benefits. We anticipate, we do anticipate. Making that agreement such that. If the town wishes to purchase those solar panels at some point. We can do so and get the balance of those tax credits.
Yeah, I would just advocate buying the panels straight out and get the. Better election, but. Again, we'll, we'll have to study the numbers to come to educate. Thank you.
Thank you, I, I know that the solar panels have been a. A situation of a number of questions that we've had. And what I would anticipate when we get to that phase after the roof is done. Sometime before then. We'll be calling a public hearing to hear from the folks. On, on your thoughts and that on it. It has not been finalized yet, but we have laid out what the potential impact is and. The dollar cost is, is being projected to us right now is, is, is nothing. But. At that point, we'll call a, a public hearing to clarify all of that.
When I put solar on my own roof. I had a same kind of choice and decided that the long fall. It made more economic sense to buy the panels outright than.
There's nothing like firsthand experience in that, well, why we'll be taking input from the public. More questions? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Tiffany Rourke, Action Factory Road.
Good morning, Ken.
This is a big project, right? Big investment. They got that now, so. I guess. Not that, I know the confidence in your ability to manage the building committee, but this is a big project, so. Can you speak to? The way of the bench, right, from the details perspective, some money, a lot of oversight, right suppliers, make sure we're getting our money to work. Again, as for rent, I just think you might provide us all better perspective and speak a little bit to the management. How it works, but we're a big project, so.
It is.
Kind of tag it on the normal day-to-day. Kind of tag it on the normal day-to-day duties. It's it's asking a lot, so you can speak about it a little bit. Thank you.
Certainly. So there's there's actually, there's actually two building committees. One is the school building committee and one is the school roof building committee, which is a smaller group of individuals a- as designated by the Board of Selectmen. Um, that that school, the school roof building committee is going to have oversight for the project. But the project, the day-to-day management of the project uh, will be done by school staff and our consulting architect.
Jim, can I assume also there'll be a project manager overseeing it?
We 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 have not put funds in the project for a project manager. Okay.
Thank you. Any?
I think the fact that they're, we're going to have the architect as part of the oversight is an is an appropriate thing.
Right, i- i- in the, you know, the pro- project is is more about a a lot of it is planning before the project starts, right? That that happens for months before the project starts. The project would start after school gets out and would be completed before school goes back into session. At least substantially complete. There may be some little things to do, but but we can't, we can't have people tearing roofs off and putting roofs on. You know, while school's in session, that would be very disruptive. So that, you know, the actual boots on the ground part of the project is 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 a roughly three-month period, which makes it a little bit easier to manage from that perspective. Um, but but the but the planning part of it will will happen for months before it actually starts.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Uh, Eric, and on the family, I think this is about the entirety.
It's it's for the entirety of the school roof, which is about eighty thousand square feet. It also would include, you know, parapet repairs and heightening and that sort of thing. Um, and insulation, yep. Because that would, the insulation would have to come up to current building code. Um, well, there's there's no quotes at this point. Right now, the the numbers that we're working from are an estimate that comes from our consulting design professional. And so what what will hap- the next step would be, assuming that this group of individuals decides to put this forward, if the project is approved, financially, the school building committee then will work on putting together an RFP for design services uh, which will kind of perfect the scope of the project. And from that, we will build an RFP to go out for quotes for the roofing project itself.
And then the impact, the people in this town, the folks later, we'll figure out where that's.
So we don't ex- we don't anticipate the project is going to be more expensive than we are currently projecting it. Our hope is it will come down a little bit. Uh, and wh- what happens is that we have to bond for the entire cost of the project. Once the project is complete, uh, we work with the State Board of Education who audits our paperwork, may come and do a site visitor too at the school to ensure that the work has been done. And at some point, they reimburse us and our current reimbursement rate is about sixty-three percent.
Technically, no. With the documents and all that, we don't know.
We don't have an exact number, but.
There there are some, Mr. Fan, there are some projections from our financial consultant. Okay.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
And if I could add, and the bonding won't happen until just before the project.
Right.
Correct. Any other questions or comments? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Carl and Ruko. This is Rod. Um, cost savings for anticipated cost savings for insulation per year?
I I don't think we've projected that, but we do project it's going to be pretty significant. It's the greatest area of heat loss in the school. Uh, the roof is also, is also planned to be a white roof. Um, and that will also help us with cooling in the summer.
How about solar?
The solar, I don't have those numbers with me, but there is a cost projection for savings with the solar.
I'm wondering why we don't have those top numbers.
Don't have that.
Why would we insulate if we're not going to save money?
Because we don't, we don't have a choice. The building code requires that we insulate.
You know, but we should have those numbers. That's, that's a part. Is it? A dollar a year, twenty thousand dollars a year? Right?
So, so I, I, so I, 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 I expect, I expect that we use about eighty thousand gallons of heating fuel a year in this building. And we will probably save about twenty percent of that.
I can give, I can give numbers for the last cold snap. So uh, that twenty-four hour, we went through seven hundred and eighty gallons of oil.
Right, but it just seems to me, because there is a you'll know how much insulation needs to be put in the roof, that your architect should have been able to give you estimates for eighty thousand square foot of roof, what your cost savings a year would be on energy.
Jim, can we get those numbers?
We we didn't, we didn't pay him for that.
Okay.
Definitely.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Yes, sir. Chuck, just a minute.
Good morning, Doug Jenny, Christian Rhodes. I just wanted to ask a couple additional questions on the management. Building on the management questions from earlier, so I think what I heard was during the actual construction, the building roof committee would be the day-to-day planning and management, keeping the contractors moving. Do they have experience doing that work? Because the summer time period is between school setting, very tight. So if if there's any pickups on a day-to-day basis, we could easily blow that schedule out of the water. So I was just wondering if if we have the experience to do that or if it's really necessary in order to maintain schedule, maintain quality and integrity, we actually hire a project manager for the day-to-day construction.
So I could address that. First of all, we're 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 trying to get the best project we can at the most economical cost for the taxpayers. Okay, myself being one of the taxpayers. Um, currently, I'm the chairman of the school building committee. I have been a licensed building official for sixteen years. I'm your building official, if you didn't know that. Um, I've been in the construction industry and facilities management for thirty-plus years. Things like this are right up my alley. I know what the issues to anticipate are. I I consult for attorneys all the time. I consult for engineers all the time. So this certainly is in my wheelhouse. Um, and I think we've got a group of individuals on the school building committee that are very capable of making those day-to-day operational decisions. And between us and the consulting architect, I don't think there's going to be a big deal, truthfully. But on the other hand, I also wouldn't mind if this group of people decided that we should add some cost in for a project manager. That would make my life easier. Uh, I I I wouldn't, certainly would not complain about that.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I I just thought maybe um, the view of the public here that I appreciate your response. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Thank you.
Your experience. Thank you.
Jim, do we have a rough estimate of what the project manager cost might be?
Chuck?
I don't. I'd know off the top of my head.
Uh, Charles, um, Westford Road. Uh, Jim, first off, I want to thank you and and your whole committee for the hard work. This has been a long book for you guys and I appreciate it. Um, I was just going to ask a couple follow-up questions. Uh, most of them have been touch base already. Uh, maybe if you can, can you give an example of what you would expect on a daily basis? So they're working away, they open up something, here's what we see, this is how it needs to be addressed. So on a daily basis, who contacts who and gives updates? And what kind of decision-making would you, as an example, acting as a project manager? Is what it sounds like in on behalf of the, on behalf of the town. Um, I'm not sure that that's fair. Um, it seems to me that maybe a project manager would would be worth taking some of the burden off of your personal shoulders, I would say that. Um, there's no doubt in my mind that you can handle those responsibilities. However, is it fair? Uh, I'm not so sure on that, but could you give us an example of how a daily update to the project manager would look like? And what would be a decision that someone would be needing to make, like just some random example? I can certainly do it in my own industry, but not necessarily something like this. Thank you.
So Mike Melody, don't hide behind the tables over there because Mike Melody is not only our head custodian here at the school, he's also a member of the school building committee. And Mike is going to be the guy who's here every day unless he decides to retire between now and then.
We won't let him.
Um, so the answer is no. Your retirement papers will not be accepted, Mike, till the school roof is. Um, so so Mike will be here, you know, on a, on a daily basis when this is happening. Uh, and certainly if something's happened on a weekend, I'm sure one of us will be popping in to see what's happening. If they open something up and say, you know, we have an old crap moment, there's something here that we've got to address. Uh, you know, I I think we're going to empower our architect to make some of those decisions because some of those you just don't have a choice about, right? I mean, you know, most of us are familiar with at least a home remodeling project where we've opened up a wall or a floor and we found something that, oh my God, we can't leave that like that. We can't just put the wall back up or the floor back down. We we've got to fix this, right? And so, you know, I, I think we've anticipated some of that happening and we have budgeted for that. And so I think, you know, there's going to be some opportunity for the architect to be able to make those decisions pretty quickly. Otherwise, with the technology we have today, we can pull together a a meeting of the school, you know, school roof building committee pretty quickly to make bigger decisions. So that's how I would anticipate handling those kind of day-to-day events that might happen. Um, you know, I I would also, you know, expect Mike to clue us in if, you know, we've had three sunny days and nobody's shown up, you know, wh- what's going on? So that we can make those phone calls and say, hey, you know, where are you? When you coming back? How come you're not here? And so those are the kinds of things that we anticipate. And I think that's the value of having our head custodian as a member of our building committee.
Um, thank you. One last question. Do we have to accept the low bidder? What what is it? How is that final number determined? So when it's sent out to uh, to bid, must we take the low bidder and how's that determined?
So I I think the answer to that is no. I think we have to be able to make a case for that uh, with this, with the State Board of Education. But our our RFP, I I anticipate that it will be written in such a manner that we do not have to accept the low bidder. Um, so what, the way that we anticipate that happening is that o- once the school project is is approved, uh, the school building committee will get to get back together, will put that RFP out for the design professional. We will then work with the design professional that's chosen to build that RFP for the school roof. Uh, and the Board of Selectmen will have to approve that RFP because they're the ones that have to put it out. But my my anticipation is that we will have that clause in there that says that the town of Ashford reserves the right to reject any and all bidders for just costs. And there may be a reason that we don't choose the low bidder.
Right.
Yes.
Or, actually, I was about to ask my question, but um, just I had another question on top of that, which was the prequalification process, how is that being handled? Can you speak to that, maybe from a financial standpoint? Are you financially prequalified contractors? Um, are you looking at their experience level, similar project that they might have done? Um, this is what we do at UConn, and I thought maybe we could.
So I I think all of the above. You know, we we will look for somebody who is financially stable, capable of undertaking the project, has similar experience, people we can check references on, you know, gee, they just did a new school roof in Tolland. Is Tolland happy with the project? Uh, I I anticipate that the answer to all of those questions is yes, absolutely.
Any other comments or questions?
Yes, sir.
My name is Tony, I have two questions. One of them may be in the materials, but when is the timeframe you're thinking about doing the roof, which summer?
I- if all of the stars aligned, I'd love to do it this year, but it's unlikely.
The second question, I I I'm on the building committee at Region nineteen, we just recently did a roof and a solar project. Um, one of the things I just want to make you aware of is that it turned out to be a pretty significant issue. We can, we did those two separate projects, but they were all done at the same time. If you're going to do the roof project and then later do the solar, it's really important to make sure that the roof contractor knows solar is going to be put on it with with white roof, the warranty integrity, because they're going to have to put ballast in, which is put the solar panels. I believe what we did is we actually put those ballasts in at the time we did the roof, so we could preserve the integrity and and prevent leakage, explain. I think it's really important to make sure if the project's going to be separate projects, that the roofing contractor, the roofing warranties, they know there's going to be solar put on it and they, and they sign off on it, that it wasn't that no one. That that turned out to be a real significant issue for us.
So I think I think that's a very valid point. Let me just address that so that everybody has the benefit of knowing where that's at. So we've already engaged the the solar consultant. Part of the solar consultant's uh, requirement is that he work with the architect to design a solar-ready roof. And we will also engage the roofing contractor in ensuring that all of those points are met.
Yeah, to make sure those are part of the RFP.
Yeah, be- because we also have to ensure that the roof has the structural integrity to hold the ballasted system for the solar panel.
And putting solar on it's not going to cause the.
Right. Correct. So we we thought of that and have that well in hand. Thank you, though.
Jim, am I not correct? I understood in order to meet the requirements, the being eligible for the reimbursement from the state, all new roofs that they would be financing or assisting with financing have to be met, built to a standard to accommodate solar?
That I don't know for sure.
Okay, I just, I heard that this week.
Are they required to accommodate solar?
Um, they, what I a little bit that I've I've looked into it, it, I have been told that nowadays, all roofs are solar-ready, but I don't know if they do, you know, the ballisters. I mean, Edo Smith just went through it, so.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, folks. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your input. That's why we have these public hearings. I've got ten thirty-seven. I'm going to call a brief five or six-minute break. And then we'll convene the town meeting. Thank you, folks.
Nice job, Jim.
Thank you.
That's what you paid me for.
Hi there. Get easy. I remember you, but when you got up there and you were speaking.
Find out some sort of.
Your last name.
Right on your throat.
Is it?
Yeah.
That's okay. Oh, I don't mind.
You were feeling itchy or something.
No, I don't feel it.
Did you? So you know, right now, tell them that.
I was a little bit nervous about speaking about this because I don't like.
I was a little bit nervous about speaking about this because I don't like talking to people, but um. So in twenty twenty-three, this is our typical obligation to bonding.
Yep.
Twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five would go down to thirty. So if we're talking if we're talking about this for fifteen years, when this for twenty, it kind of falls into um, you know, we have two hundred left.
Yeah.
I just get nervous about talking in front of people, but.
So it kind of it ends up kind of staying flat.
Staying flat. And that might be helpful.
Yeah.
My stuff, I'm sorry.
You're being recorded.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. I'm fine. It's not secret.
No, but I figured that would be helpful.
Yeah. I feel comfortable with this term now.
Yes.
There was only twenty people here. I I would I'd be nervous about voting in favor.
Well, I guess he's going over to tell people.
Oh, that's why he wanted to break.
He wanted to break to go over.
So he could say, we're about to vote if you want to come vote.
Yeah.
That makes sense. So after this, what excitement do you have for the weekend? Kathy and I did that. It's just like she sends me a text yesterday and says, you want to go grocery shopping? When I go to work, I'm like, how do I answer that question? Right, because that's what she said. So I just said, I really go grocery shopping when you get out of work. I I this week I had meetings Monday night, Tuesday night, Wednesday night. So, you know, the only time we're getting this spent together right now during budget season is like I leave work and we meet somewhere for dinner or something.
Yeah.
Okay, she goes back home while lately she's been always a backless house because that is just at that point where she's uncomfortable. I mean, she looks like she's nice.
No, but those are nails.
She's having issues with sugar.
Oh, yeah.
Nor it's getting a little bit high, but not super high, but then it's and she's just, yes, sir.
Um, I just would like to request being part of the discussion of the solar. Um, I spent a good bit of time studying the Green Bank uh database.
Sure.
Uh, solar insulation, so I have a pretty good understanding of how that all works. Uh, and it's the question of the economics really depends on ongoing interest. So if
Yeah.
if you're borrowing the money and you're paying substantial interest, then it makes sense for to have somebody else provide it. As opposed to
Right.
investment. Uh, the other thing is that with such a large roof, it it seems likely that you'd be generating excess capacity.
Like, yes.
Yeah, and that one of the things that one might want to consider down the line to reduce ongoing costs. That you might have the the excess uh electrical capacity to shift to heat pumps and that would both be something that will qualify for reimbursement under the Incelsion Reduction Act and also uh be more economical.
Sure. Thank you. And I and Will and Catherine have your information, right?
Catherine has my information. So.
Great.
And I would expect Tony to be a part of that. Thank you for organizing.
Thank you. They organized it. I just showed up.
Yeah, actually implicitly, uh, your answer to that one question was I'm the project manager. If you want to uh hire someone that you can do.
I'm not going to complain.
Anyway, thank you.
Good, good. He's doing fine. He'll be back to work this week.
Oh, will he? Because he has some complications or something.
He's just trying to take care of stuff in his because, you know, his wife is not doing well.
Yeah, is he going to get his knee fixed?
His knee is fixed. He was out. Yeah, he was out last spring for six weeks. He got his knee fixed. Now he's he's having trouble getting a doctor's appointments and stuff, so he's he's trying to buy a wheelchair van.
Yeah, yeah, I talked to him all about his his wife and stuff, but
Yeah.
somebody had said that he was having complications.
No. People people keep trying to figure out why he's out, and I just keep saying he's taking care of business at home.
He's entitled to a vacation.
I don't know if it really is.
Well, you know.
He'd rather be at work, but but he had he had a string of doctor's appointments. He was late on doing it. Had to go to the dentist. He had a tooth rebuilt. So he's just taking care of business at home.
This keeps his workload just keeps him bigger and bigger and bigger. You do.
Well, it'll shrink soon, soon. I've got uh we we've got interviews scheduled to replace me, so. Yeah, I'm in Bolton now, but I'm the town administrator.
Yeah.
On top of everything else.
You can stay in that position and kind of
Yeah, I'm going to stay in that position. So I've we we are hiring a new chief building person.
Yeah.
So Randy will spend his lion's share of his time out here in Ashford and and Willing. So. We're getting there.
Glad to hear he's doing well.
Yeah, no, he's fine.
Yeah.
He's fine. I'm good.
Yeah.
I'm tired. This week I'm tired. I had meetings Monday night, Tuesday night, Wednesday night, Thursday night.
I got to talk to Kathy for me. I haven't seen her in years.
Yeah, she's doing well, too.
Thinking about her the other day. I was like, we've been
Yeah, she's this last year. She was ten years cancer-free.
Yeah, my gosh.
I I was scared. Can't say I wasn't.
I think duct tape. Save the day.
Okay, good. Thank you.
All right, folks, we're going to reconvene if you could find a seat. Thank you, folks. We're going to reconvene. I've got the ten forty-seven. I'm going to ask the town clerk to read the notice.
So this is the legal notice published in the Ashford Citizen. Um, if you use up a copy, it might be slightly different. This on the front desk, um, this one has the link for the meeting bottom. The notice, public hearing, special town meeting, Saturday, February eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, and then Ashford School Campus hearing. The electors qualified to vote in the town meeting of the town of Ashford, Connecticut, are hereby notified and warned to have a public hearing slash special town meeting of said town will be held at the Ashford School in four forty Westford Road in Ashford, Connecticut, and remotely via Zoom. See link below. On Saturday, February eleventh, twenty twenty-three, at ten AM for the purposes listed below. Voting will be in person only. One, to conduct a public hearing on the proposed five million dollar appropriation and borrowing authorization for the planning, design, and construction of new roof at the Ashford School. Two, to elect a moderator for special town meeting. Three, to consider an act on the following resolution. A, to appropriate the amount of five million dollars and to authorize the issue bonds and notes of the town in an amount not to exceed five million dollars to finance the appropriation for the cost of the planning, design, and construction of a new roof at the Ashford School, parentheses, the project. The appropriation may be spent for design, construction, demolition, and removal of materials, installation, permitting, and environmental costs, equipment, materials, architectural, engineering, and other consultant fees, legal fees, net interest on borrowings, and other financing costs, and other expenses related to the project and its financing, including the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the project, to authorize the issue temporary notes of the town in an amount not to exceed five five million dollars in anticipation of set of bonds and notes and grants, and to authorize the first selectman and the treasurer of the town to determine the amount, states, interest rates, maturities, redemption provisions, form, and other details, the notes or bonds, and to perform all other acts which are necessary or appropriate to issue the bonds or notes. The town anticipates applying for and receiving a grant from the State Department of Education to the fray of proportion of the eligible costs of the project. B, to take such action to allow temporary advances of available funds which the town reasonably expects will be reimbursed from the proceeds of tax-exempt borrowings and to authorize the first selectman and the treasurer to bind the town pursuant to such recommendations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption from federal income taxation of interest on the bonds, notes, or temporary notes authorized by the resolution and issue the dependent tax-exempt basis, including covenants to pay rebates of investment earnings to the United States in future years and to make representations and enter into rare agreements for the benefit holders of bonds or notes to provide secondary market disclosure information, which agreements may include such terms as they deem advisable or appropriate in order to comply with applicable laws or rules for paying this to the sale or purchase of bonds, notes, or temporary notes.
Take a breath.
C, to authorize the first selectman, the Board of Education, and other proper officials in the and officers and officials of the town to apply for and accept federal and state grants to help finance the appropriation for the project. Any grant proceeds may be used to pay project costs or principal and interest on bonds, notes, or temporary notes. And D, to authorize the Board of Selectmen, the Board of Education, the First Selectman, the Treasurer, and other proper officers and officials of the town to take all other action which is necessary or desirable to construct and complete the project, to issue bonds, notes, or temporary notes, and to obtain grants to finance the appropriation for the project. They did it Ashford, Connecticut, this first day of February twenty twenty-three. William A. Flannery for selectmen, Philip Selectmen, Catherine Silver Smith, Selectmen, and then linked to this meeting follows.
Thank you, Sherry. She did much better than I would have done with that. Um, since we've taken care of the first item already, um, I'm going to open the floor uh for nominations for moderator. There's a nomination.
Second nomination.
There was a nomination made. And second, are there any further nominations? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, folks. To consider an act on the following resolution, and unless there's an objection, I'm not going to go ahead and try to reread what Sherry just read, but um, do I have a motion? The resolution for bonding.
Who's the second?
And your name? You have that, Sherry?
The last name is C E L L I?
Is there a second?
That was the second. Lauren Olson.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't see over there, Lauren. All right, we have a motion that's been made and seconded. Are there any other discussion, any uh discussions uh regarding the motion on the floor? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a hand vote of uh yays and nays, and the town clerk and assistant town clerk will count the numbers. Um, raise your hands high. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Only raise one arm. Put our hands down now.
You may put your hands down.
Thank you. All opposed? That's an easy count.
I'm sorry. What were the notes?
One. I'm going to verify, but I think the eyes have it.
The eyes have it. Ninety-nine to one.
At a vote of ninety-one uh ninety-nine to one, the motion is passed. And I thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Meeting is adjourned at ten fifty-six. Thank you, folks.